Okay, 6:30. Hi, I would like to make this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everybody to the September 12th edition of the Town of Manlis Planning Board. First item on our agenda is to review and approve the minutes of August 22nd.
I'll make a motion. A second, Anne's motion.
Anne made a motion, second by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, minutes are approved as written. One abstention. Is there any extension?
I don't.
Okay. What was that? It's a new motion. It was the motion because you weren't here last time. First regular item on the agenda is an application by KZR Compressors. This is scheduled today for a public hearing relative to site plan and special use permit. This is regarding property located at 7162 North Central Ave, East Syracuse. Tax map number 054-2-1. It's scheduled for public hearing. And we, we had been having seeker determinations before public hearings. And yet we've had a couple of situations where we had to wait until after the public hearing. So I think we're in a better place, better part of valor is to do the public hearing first and then go through seeker. So Madam Secretary, did we do proper publication for this hearing?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to waive it. Motion made by Ed to waive it, second by Valerie, all in favor?
Aye.
We are waiving the reading of the notice of publication. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Read by Richard and I think Valerie came in, oh, it's Judy? All in favor?
Aye.
We are hereby opening the public hearing concerning this application. Site plan and special use permit for 7162 North Central Ave. If anyone chooses to speak, just stand up and feel free. Anybody raising their hand?
No.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Motion made by Richard, second by Ed, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Seeker.
Okay, so we're going to add, answer no or small intent or moderate to large. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy in a sales to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy cuts? Energy opportunities?
No.
Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or private water wastewater treatment?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? All answers having been answered, no or small impact, the Chair can entertain a negative seeker declaration.
I would entertain a motion for a negative declaration, Anne's second one up first, second by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Special use permit next. We're going to go through special use permit agenda.
Thank you. So here's the questions for the special use permit. Is the community protected from traffic congestion conflicts, flooding, and excessive soil erosion?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the community protected from unnecessary noise, lighting, and odors?
Yes.
Does this plan protect the community from inappropriate design or other matters of significance?
Yes.
Does the plan ensure the proposed use will be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is proposed?
Yes.
Can any adverse impact be mitigated with compliance? And do there need to be any conditions attached to this?
I don't think so.
Any mitigation? And does the project conform with the town's planning objectives?
Yes.
Okay. All the criteria have been met as appropriate for a special permit.
Did the, is the existing special use, special use permit expiring? And we're extending it, is that what?
Where they're selling the building.
Yes, it needs a move.
Right, so I guess what I'm asking is, this is seven year special use.
It's branded.
It's branded.
The rest ones are branded. So it's moved because there's a vulnerability.
But it's a seven year.
We would.
Well, it's a condition if you want to put a condition of years on it, yes, you may. The additional would be seven years.
Okay.
I would suggest that this could be within the same motion.
I would entertain a motion for approval or disapproval, as you, as you please, relative to site plan and special use permit. Second. Seven, it's a seven year.
With the condition that the special permit will be a seven year duration?
Yes.
At which point it would need to come back for a traditional people.
And that's just what I heard her say.
I just didn't want to clarify just for the record, Anne.
And that's traditional.
That's traditional.
Yeah.
And no reason to vary.
It's normal, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood it's for approval of, because I didn't hear those words.
Yes, she did.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I think that's an ideal position for that, that, that particular property is just ideal for that. And it couldn't be any better place.
Yeah, if I could, Joe, living in that area, it's always good to see that building being used, you know, on that corner there. I think that's a great spot for it and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second item on the agenda is an application by Route 5 Development Corp. And this is an initial presentation today for two lot subdivision. They're seeking to subdivide 404 and 406 Town Drive, tax map number 087-1-15.2. And you all may recall that it was about a year ago, we approved the construction of two restaurants on this premises. Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Honey, you tell us a little bit about what you're doing.
Okay. Like what you're seeing out there. Two restaurants are constructed, they're not finished inside, the first part is done, but the tenants are building outside interiors. We are seeking to subdivide it into two lots. I don't know if everybody has a map on, I brought one, but basically, we're doing this for financing purposes and to provide us with some flexibility going forward. We have, the first lot's going to be 2.85 acres, the next lot's going to be, that's the Panera lot. And then the Chipotle lot, which is the lot closest to the street, to Genesis Street, is 0.725 acres. We, parking, you know, the needs code, the parking, you know, I can go through that with you. It's really low space, we're every five seats, Panera has 150 seats. Meaning three, thirty spaces are required and we're providing forty-four spaces. Chipotle has fifty-eight seats, meaning we require twelve parking spaces and we have provided twenty-four. We are providing access across, you know, really it's a reciprocal reason agreement, which I sent around today, I know nobody's had time to look at it. But that is something that we have in place throughout the town center for our different tenants to be able to cross, to be able to access, to be able to park. In this instance, there will be shared potential maintenance between the two. So that's what that, that declaration of purpose. If anyone has questions on that, you know, I know it's, it's pretty, you know, dry, what do you do? I'm happy to address the questions. Jamie, I don't know.
I took, I took a quick look at it, obviously we need the exhibits, but I also want to make sure that there is the access that actually comes into the.
Sure.
Into the center.
Right, yeah, so that's the first REA, so this builds on existing REAs.
Okay, so you've already got that.
Yeah, so that lot, when we sub, sub, subdivided from tops, that access was there at the first REA. So you'll see in the like whereas paragraphs, it's building on the existing documents that are in place and recorded. And this is later on top of it, so if you need any of those.
Would you mind sending me that, just because I, I was not involved in all of it, so just want to take a look at it.
It's all a bit old, someone goes way back, but yeah, I'd be happy to get that for you. You just want the ones that are referenced.
Oh, you'll, right. Just what gets us there, and then that way I, we, it can also be in the, the Lisa's file, the town file, so they're right.
They'll all see it, right, okay, perfect, I will get that out to you all, and send it to Lisa and to you.
Right, okay. And the Chair, and loves to read those things.
I already did.
Well, the, the ones that were from the prior is what I'm talking about, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is your intent to file with county clerk, the reciprocal?
Yes, absolutely, that would be reported.
Okay, just so you know, we've had some difficulty with the documents like this that have exhibits that are really empty and that's what you have, so we're gonna.
You want the exhibits.
We really truly need the exhibits.
It is a draft and that's why it's set that way, just in case people had comments, but so we are happy to get the exhibits on.
Thank you. The verbiage will apply.
Yes. So, questions? Do you start us?
Yeah, two, two paths. I thought it was a very well-written REA. We, we've got this exhibit that was in there somewhere, I can't remember where I found it, but it's crossing out in between the two buildings. So I guess my question is, what does that mean?
I think what that was supposed to do is identify a middle driveway, so it was showing you what the middle driveway is. Because that's defined in the, in the document as, not defined, it's referenced in the document as who's maintaining that. We want Panera to maintain that.
Okay.
So that's why it's referenced in there, so it's not crossing out, it's, it's attaching it in and, and define, it should have a little word that says middle drive. If you can see that on there, I don't know.
No, it, it definitely says middle drive, and I was looking at, I didn't see that in the REA, and I, okay.
It does mention it, I don't know what page it's on, but it does say, because, and just to get into details here, that we felt that if you were to have different owners at some point, you know, we don't have that plan yet, but if we did, Panera's really the only one using that drive. Because it's their drive group, so like if you're going, if you're at Chipotle, your cars would never go through there.
Okay.
So the idea was we wanted to define that as being maintained by Panera and replaced by Panera.
Okay.
It did need a replacement, so that's why it was pulled out. Otherwise you would, the line goes right down the middle, I don't know if you've noticed that.
I saw, as far as the.
Yes, it goes right down the middle and that's due to, where do we get the words from? Code, fire code separation issues that they want, because there's a window on that side, this is not my, my area of expertise, but I do have a code review. Like architectural code review that requires the lot lines to have so much space after the window. And it has to do with fire separation. So that's why the line is drawn that way, otherwise it would have been simple to just put the line so that Panera had a whole drive. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So in this instance, we have the drive line where it is for code, but then the REA puts the maintenance down, the Panera lot.
Okay, and I didn't, I didn't have a lot of time to read that, I went through.
I'm sorry, it was sent out today, just people were nutsing around with it, changing it so many times, I didn't want to keep changing it on you guys, so I figured it's okay.
So if sometime in the future, you do in fact sell one of the buildings, I saw where it talked about if there's destruction of a property by fire or whatever. The owner with the small O will take care of that, right now that's you.
That's right.
And that if you sold it sometime in the future, we would define the large O as whoever it is that you sold that property to, they'd be responsible.
That's right.
Okay, all right.
That's right.
All right.
And I do again apologize, I know nobody likes to get things the day of the meeting, and we're pretty fast weeks. Well, I just, I just felt like, you know, it could be something, because I know this, I think has to go to county and county. There is a public hearing, so I thought it'd be people's time.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that, like I said, I went through it real quick and those are the things I saw, okay, thank you. We also got a bunch of stuff on signage, are we to discuss signage tonight, or?
They, they can't be.
I just can't hear something.
Are you in a position to do signage? I wouldn't think you would be.
I didn't, I didn't apply for signage, but I, yeah, I just did.
Okay, all right, okay. Kate, forgive me, but I, we were trying to determine the purpose of what the purpose was, and we were thinking that maybe you've got a sale in progress. But you're indicating it's just for financing, can you explain what that does?
Well, we're, we're trying to remain flexible, we have, I don't want to get into the, actually the details of our loans, et cetera, but so it is. One thought is you can then sort of pay off one loan and, and be done with it, and then you have a, a caddy going through the property. The other option is, we do have people interested in buying one of them, we're not sure we want to sell it, but that is probably where it's heading, I just don't have, I don't have anyone right now that's, you know, a deal or anything. We want to be able to, if possible, sell it, sell, sell part of it, it's not the whole thing.
Okay, we are going to refer this to county.
Sure.
And unfortunately county will not be able to do this in time for our next meeting.
Right.
And unfortunately, if you have that, the next meeting was holiday due to indigenous people, so we're going to have to go to October 24th.
Yeah, it's okay, I looked at the agendas, I figured it out, so I was prepared for that, but I appreciate your explanation.
Which date is it?
October 24th.
Yeah.
I have one more motion, just, and this is just curiosity. A lot of times, the subdivision is the footprint of the building, and you don't want to get involved in the parking area as part of the parcel. And I'm just wondering why you're doing it now as opposed to when maybe a potential buyer, whatever comes forward and says, yeah, I want the footprint of the building, but I don't want the parking, leave that in common area.
I, I think it's just based on our discussions, but we have a broker that reps this, who's interested in that kind of thing, and this is how we were seeing these transactions, that, that, that's how they wanted them, you know, they do want, they do want the, they want a very simple, I own this and I, I can't. I don't, I don't have to go to somebody else to maintain that property, et cetera, so.
Okay.
It, it's just based on the market, really.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing. Valerie?
A second.
And it's all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is hereby scheduled October 24th.
I just have an old question, something I remember a long time ago, am I supposed to send out notices to everybody? You do that, okay, because I remember at one point we, we're applicants, you have to do that, okay, thank you. Sure, I appreciate it, that was a good question.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda. Is an application by Paragon Development, and this is their initial presentation today, it's relative to a site plan and special use permit for, it's just a living center on Medical Center Drive and Fayetteville, tax map number 086-1-3.9.
I have a little light up on the project.
This is Stephen Bowman with Paragon Development.
Okay. Well, whenever you want to speak, make speak.
Well, I'm here obviously for site plan, supporting the top lot operations and other permits that are involved with this.
Trevor ordered the two of you to.
Well, he just has a, a handout that kind of goes through, covered all, so.
Okay, okay.
This is, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a courtesy I have, this one, the other one's behind me.
Correct.
So we're going to do two at once.
Yeah, but let's keep that hard line, I got two different clients.
That sounds good. It beats boards though, I gotta tell you.
At least you got it to work.
So just for the record, Rod and I, we're back off consulting, we are the civil site engineers for Paragon Development on this project, with the partner is Stephen Bowman. He is with Paragon, so if you have a question regarding operations, the things related to that, we'll address that first to Bowman. Do need, this project will need special permit, which I have always, for the planning board, for the town boards, I have to go back with. Also, site plan approval. So just location wise, this is on the southeast corner of the intersection of Medical Center Drive and April Road or EMB Road intersection. For those, half of you were involved in 2019, the other half weren't, so I'll just kind of briefly go back in time. 2018, 2019, we were here for pretty much the same type of operation, the Alcon at that point was JEA out of Seattle, Washington. Same type of facility that memory care Alzheimer's residents, okay? At that time, we did receive our special permit through the town board, we did receive subdivision approval.
Yeah.
Site plan, we got them out, the five yard line, and I, I don't know why JEA didn't go forward. My big guess is COVID, because it was spring of 2020 was when we were expecting this. Open up, dirt first, start earthwork, that COVID came around, so whether that was the ultimate tipping point or not, I, I don't know. So, you guys may, we're here about tonight with Paragon. I just, I was talking to Doug and he had mentioned about, was, he asked if the site was something, I did, did want to, I know on the site plan application, I put in the unsigned, unrecorded version, because I have a lot of files on a lot of different projects, I couldn't find subdivision map. I do have now, this is the recorded one, so that was recorded in October of 2019, so it is a separate parcel from the. Four herself acre lot at the Dallas. The question, the access, the cross access easement at the entry.
I think it's a little next door.
1.5 acres, plus or minus?
And there's, you talked about these, there is an easement that's recorded for the entrance way.
Yes, and it has been filed, and all other state.
Is it a cross easement, so they're both?
Between the two, yes.
Okay.
So a shared driveway?
Yeah.
With the Dosses or the future. And we didn't change the driveway location for the Paragon site.
And when you did the SWIP, did you include the driveway that's not on your property? It's, it's.
Yeah, we are managing previous area that this project creates.
Okay.
We don't know in the future what's going to happen.
Which includes the off-site driveway? Half, half the driveway, yes, okay, that's all, okay, fine.
Just so you can see side by side, how, how, the differences, so we got JEA, site plan on the top of page, Paragon Development site on the bottom. JEA, we have about 35,000 square foot building, Paragon, we have about 37,000 square foot. Previous area, both run right around the 8,400 square feet, so previous area coverage, which in stormwater, that's what I'm concerned about, or the same. And both sites were provided in the 46 parkings. It's kind of, there's, I don't want to say they're identical, because there's some nuances that we're able to take advantage of, but pretty much the bid ticket items when it comes to site plan were pretty much what that application is. Just, so our site plan specifically had the same location as the JEA driveway from 2019. We do have a secondary access off of EMB Road for fire protection, emergency service, other emergency services, just general traffic. We did shift that a little bit, and I'll get it back, I'll put that off the side, I can explain why we shifted that driveway just a little bit to the north. Parking arrangement is a little different, with Paragon, their facility, their receiving area and dumpsters are up in this. up in this corner. Just so operationally, we massage the parking layout just to meet those needs a little bit.
I guess what I, one of the things I'd like to see that is a concern of mine. I'm not sure if anybody else. Reararrangement of the offsite improvements to the roadway. Yep, right there. It'd be nice if it could be marked so we could see it because.
Aren't out there.
Out there on site. It's just, I don't care if you flag it or whatever, because we're putting now another left-hand turn into the, then develop that is not existing today.
Correct.
Off of that roadway. And it's not a long distance from the Maricu turn to where you're proposing to put that. And it'd be nice just to be able to see it.
Yeah.
So we'd understand exactly what it is and where it's gonna go. I know, I.
I don't need that. I mean, what, what we can do is stake out, you know, certainly where the cook cut's gonna exist. Um, probably, you know, the bump out.
You gotta cut the median, yeah. But that's, yeah, they have to cut the median and put the bump out and so on.
Yeah, so.
Which more you need to go.
Yeah, the existing bump out that is to the west of the driveways for RLC Emperor Maricu.
Yep.
That'll stay the same.
Yep.
And then, yeah, west of that, we're gonna create a, uh, left turn only lane. A new bump out will go to the west, to head to west along Medical Center Drive. Again, to just create that, we're trying to duplicate the same pattern that is there at the American.
And I appreciate that. That's good. It's just, that's really close. And I just.
I understand.
Yeah.
I mean, we have stacking for, uh, three vehicles in that left turn lane. Okay, uh, which Mr. Bowman, get, like, he can get into, you know, and we got into it with the JEA, uh, with Rachel Rediger. The site, the traffic, the, the employees. Fortunately for, it is what it is. Not a lot of visitors coming at a single point in time. So, uh, we don't need a tech cop slot.
But that's for your development. We don't know what's going on the one point one acres next to it.
Yeah, Richard might, might suggest that. Right, I can talk about this. All the work that we've done, we have provided.
Yep.
The date, it was done by Gordon.
Yes.
So maybe if you said Gordon, give a quick look at it. Bless it.
Mike, did it back in 2019?
But that was my right.
I, I, yeah.
Was it there? In 2019, that turn off.
No, there's.
I thought it went all the way around.
No, 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 there's nothing here now. That's.
But I mean, it wasn't. Was that supposed to be there?
It was proposed.
It was proposed?
Yes, yes, it was.
I remember something went all the way around.
Well, we actually came in. Yeah, we still had the two entries.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of discussion. After it was all completed. Gordon. Provided, adopted a technical agreement.
I may not have been on the planning board at that time, so I, I don't.
Oh, for, for this problem, yes. For, for the Perrin.
I think that's coordinated with Rob.
Yeah. Rob was, it was his fragmentation. A lot today, as you travel eastbound up to this driveway, you wanted that all strength is no access. And that was, that's what is your question to him now, Rich.
So, so it's just a question. I mean, I, you know.
Yeah, we can throw some stakes out there. It's not gonna be exact.
It'll give you. No, but it's pretty close to the Maricu.
Yeah, yeah. The quickest and cheapest way to wipe this down is for a couple guys we have, we're all consulting, go out there, stake it out, draw some tape and throw some stakes in the ground and flash. So you can see.
So there'd be another bump out.
Yes, yeah, there's two lanes. So I don't know.
Aren't there two lanes also? And then it narrows into one by Maricu. So this will be, you'd be crossing two lanes, right?
Well, so this, this is the last. That inner lane.
Yeah.
Here, that Rob wants marked as no access. So basically highway supervisor wants to make P M A B last night. It's been over Center Drive, it's a travel eastbound, it's a one-way road.
Yeah, so he just wants a whole way?
Up to Martin Drive.
Up to here, yeah.
Okay, and that, we have to create another bump out on our side, let's say have the, the southerly side.
Right.
So that we can make a, uh, left turn only into RLC. And that's not gonna be a huge whole bunch. Not so much if it's lost.
It'll be tricky, but that's, you know, that's the move that I see, but.
Yeah, so there's, and again, we we were trying to replicate as far as dimensionally, what these bump outs look out like. We were trying to replicate what is there now. We weren't trying to read about the deal. We did throw this up to Gordon Stance, where they're trying to take a look at barriers from a traffic standpoint. Does it make sense? And then also we talked, uh, discussed it with the highway supervisor.
I, I guess I was asking just to make sure that was reviewed.
Yeah.
Well, last time we did approve, but conditioned at the approval on approval of the talent engineer to make sure that the bump out worked for the cross section.
Yes.
And, uh, I'm, I'm positive we would have the same type of recommendation today. We want the town engineer to.
Which is fine, you know. They work with Doug and his highway superintendent to make sure we get, you know, the times up. Intersection geometry that works for the town.
Have you received this SWIP yet?
We've just got a preliminary drainage, just to get, you know, we can talk about, uh, the drainage scheme here. It's the same idea with bio retention filters, collecting the previous area, it's treated for water quality and water production value. With this site, we're able to do a, uh, surface detention versus underground. The JEA site, we have to go underground with the water on the ex itself. This site, because the, the big thing is that Perrin doesn't have that huge expanse of a courtyard on North Side Street. So all we're able to do is take this and move it to the north. Now allows us to put our retention basin. They gave us some room for the, like, potential base in the next site. And this will drain, uh, we're still taking the water to the southwest corner where it's an older land flow situation versus dumping it into the closed drainage system on Medical Center Drive. Yeah, it's storage requirements by doing it the way we're doing it is matching ten year, ten year, a hundred year, a hundred year. We're gonna go out to Medical Center Drive, a hundred year storm, we have to squash that down to a ten year storm. So that we can, um, surcharge the existing drainage system. So we gave, I gave some preliminary numbers to Doug, but knowing we are, you know, we gotta tweak some things probably here and there as we go along. And we just want to give Doug, yeah, something that we're comfortable level as far as that is handled during the proper.
I was looking at the preliminary SWIP that you gave us, and I'm confused on this page. And I look at EX one and EX two. And this is a three point eight, eight, five acre parcel.
Right.
But if I add this to this, I come up with four point five.
So you're, so now, well, you're doing, your, your drainage areas aren't on those property lines.
Okay.
That map is showing drainage areas. It is not showing.
So this property line is not.
Well, so what happens? So the one on the top of the page.
Yep.
That is taking half of V M A B room. So we have additional area.
Okay.
That is tributary to our design.
Okay.
Okay, so it's.
So, so in other words, Doug's on this, Rich, forget about it.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna put those words in anybody's mouth.
I was just curious. I said, wow, that's, that's.
What I'm gonna start saying is, yeah, drainage areas and property lines are always.
Okay.
Close down.
Okay, alright. I'm listening in Italian.
Okay. All utilities, uh, water, sewer, gas, water, sewer's gonna come, we have a resistant sewer in an easement along our south. Water's gonna come off of the south side of Medical Center Drive and then gas and electric will have to, uh, come underneath. Medical Center Drive will be coordinated with management. So a little bit different setup before we add some, everything was coming up off of the corner. Because we've got to get facilities to this spot, I would go, we were able to shorten those. And I will coordinate where D P is, where it belongs as far as the assets. We are showing one hundred right now. Uh, we are, Chief Hildreth reviewed the last plan, but we'll shoot this over to him to get his talents on this point as far as
That, that was one of the problems with the last plan, but we worked that out.
Yes, yeah, I mean, we, we've got a little bit wider of an area up in the entry, some fire trucks to come through. So the turning movements are a little bit easier at the entry. Landscaping, a lot of it is in the bio retention filters, but, uh, you know, as you can see here, you know, this is a typical. I will say, as you're looking at this here. This site here, again, is with the year. Okay, uh, just the service areas will be in this corner, whereas in this, they're all. So that'll just be one.
Brad, I'm seeing dormers on both ends of the building, but, uh, is this in fact a one-story building only?
Yes. Yeah, I think.
Board members, questions?
It's a nice looking build.
Is that a church?
Yes, sir.
Say something. Make the point that I'm speaking moment, Perrin, we've developed this building quite before. This building exists at a, uh, hill. The floor wants to schedule a tour of the site, of the floor, the building, the operation. See, you know, we're saying out in the last, but one building we've done quite before is a yield for an energy here. Our, our operating philosophy started a medical care program. We asked ourselves, well, we checked with the bit of, during three years, how do we determine whether we get it without. Perrin, I think it's unusual that the full program that helps individuals to themselves as long as possible. And we tear this here with that tear, Alzheimer's, that's your patient, we have to have it feeling, she said, I'm losing myself. So if you know the disease of Alzheimer's, just loss of short-term memory, how do you help the individual themselves? What's gonna give you the long-term memory? Through our building, everything we do is moving backwards. We put active reflections in their building all the time. Not to teach people, but to find people we already know. And, uh, but we have a pretty huge, huge, large, it's all about helping people, we, they, themselves, their long-term. And we have to check over the only operating. Photograph and check. The idea there is with long-term memory.
Okay. Well, I remember when it first came to, I thought that took a great rotation or something.
And this is similar, although not the same, but, but it's, it's similar and the use would be the same, right?
I'd love to see it sometime.
Sorry, Eric.
Well, except as this location in that blocks.
I got a question.
Go ahead.
God, this view is from a roadside plan here. It's grown. Your lot actually is about twenty or twenty-five feet some. The rise.
Wise, yeah. So again, this is typical. This is not our site dropped on here.
What I'm getting to is what I'm getting to is you're screening. So you've got the cars in front. And nobody said anything about that yet. Obviously, there's no way we can put the cars behind, because that's even worse. You've screened the parking lot. Medical Center Drive and towards.
Uh, so we left a gap here, uh, and we can enhance the stream, uh, as we move west. Uh, but we left a break here, just, that's where utilities are. Once National Grid gets a hold of this, they'll have their own ideas about how that product's gonna be. So either they can either continue that or by Perrin, you know. Kind of coordination of National Grid. Uh, the bio retention filter, we do have large trees that'll go in there, other lowline shrubs, and the DC has a laundry list, I'm gonna say, or a grocery shopping list of plants that need to go into the bio retention filter. Sorry, number for sure, but yeah, the, uh, grasses, bushes, uh, wood and vegetation. So, you know, we've got to put those in the bio retention. Just because we don't want, we use a lot of like river merch in those bio retention filters because of all the water getting nice and big. Like, on, on, she, you know, our son. There's a lot of advantages to true.
Like, the width, that's the best example of river for ants right there.
Yeah.
Gordon, I.
Ron, just refresh my memory. This is our A.
Correct.
So it's not RM, so we don't have to worry about parking in front. I'm not asking you that. I'm just making a comparison. It is our X. So RM is where we have to worry about parking.
I'm just thinking aesthetically. Aesthetically, it would be terrible to put the cars up on top.
Oh, yeah.
That's all I can see. Wouldn't see the building.
But it's not like RM where we're required to put it back, so we've got some flexibility.
Yeah, what's gonna happen, fortunately, we're unfortunately, I was about to say, drive climbs, our site, repartee. Is or not. So we do, you know, we've shown some trees at the highest point, uh, guys break up the building a little bit. You know, but the, with the bio retention filters, the trees that are showing along perimeter, I think it'll break up that part.
I didn't notice, but is there a, a survey or site plan or whatever that shows setbacks? Building envelope?
Uh, I can't remember. We don't show the building envelope based on code. What we're showing is our building where the setbacks are compared to in the criteria, like criteria of the, of the right. All the players for setbacks, which is what we're showing with the building.
So no variances are necessary for which you're showing this.
Correct.
So, so one thing, uh, when the Brooklyn campus were born. Look, this is my style, hop along, uh, bed ride. Couple road, there is a walking path, still a walkie path. Couple road, there is a walking path, still a walking path. Campus, before, uh, we did continue that walking path across that center drive over to the edge of the park. The old by, the owners. We had last, we go around here.
We did.
Took us something to think about, I don't know.
I'm not seeing any indication you're trying to do that though.
Yeah, I, I went back to some of our comments, responses or whatnot, and it came to a walk down. This, as far as along, some dry discussion was, these are residents, not gonna be leaving them, so.
You don't want them to.
That's true.
Well, what we had said was, existing comes along, Med Center Drive.
Right on the, on the north side.
Yeah, men would propose to cut across the top, and it would rock it, not become.
On, on the east end also.
Yeah, where you have the, where you have the sidewalk right now, it was basically in that area, in that area.
Well.
It wasn't, it wasn't coming up, Met Center Drive.
Yeah, and, uh, we're not talking about connecting the sidewalks.
The thought was that, that trail would connect across the top.
Well, this has got effects, didn't it?
It would allow, it would allow people to build tech over.
Yeah, I mean, for safety reasons, the sidewalk, certainly that can be, a little turn of the site is faster. So, another issue, grades, because of the geography, that sidewalk sits kind of in a hole compared to the intersection.
Yes, just for the record, yesterday, a gentleman left his home at Starview. He's walking down towards the town center on Berdick Street, though. He tripped and, uh, he died as a result of that, so that's something to consider, these private little walkways that we had worked out last time. Keeps people off the main road. We tossed you guys into it last time.
Well, I'm just, a lot of my concern with this walkway is ADA accessibility, it's steep, because like some drives.
Well, because I don't know if I took that. At least we got part of the sidewalk, not hurting, but it's getting. Getting the word, it's a term.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think you want people that are in this facility walking. Well, not this side.
There is that, so there isn't just. Yeah.
Something to think about, yeah. Right now, we're referring everything to county for their recommendations. I think it's premature to schedule a public hearing of this, uh, I'd like to have Doug get more information on the, unless you disagree.
I do, I, I, it's, it's the same. Pretty much the same application, so I would like to get a public hearing scheduled.
So, I mean, the thing is, we have to do the seeker before we do the public hearing, so if there's any questions about the, you know, anything on the engineering. We want to count that. And we have our next meeting, then we've got not a meeting.
And we don't have a meeting four weeks after that.
But that would give time for everything to come back from county, for you to get stuff to Doug. And then, I mean, if you want to schedule it for that October, but that would be provided, thanks that end.
You just scheduled. We ought to hear from the board, I want the board thanks. That's a long, that's a long way away.
Well, it can't be, it can't be next week.
No, no.
So, it would have, it would be in the early days.
Yeah.
Well, they're discussing, let me ask one more question. The owner of this property, do they still own the one point they don't? Is there a deed? Okay, is there, given the way you have the entrance developed there, or proposed. Is there a deed restriction on the one point two acres, or whatever it is, that they must use that as their main entrance? Or are they gonna be looking for an additional entrance?
So, that, or if there was not a deed restriction, you need to help all this stuff.
Do you think we can get everything what they need?
Because to me, that, that needs to be the only entrance to that other parcel.
We have, back in twenty nineteen, twenty eighteen, when we did look at, Mr. Dallas, calling me, I said, hey, what could I do?
Okay.
Okay. I mean, we should show them to use that.
Okay, I wasn't on the board at that time, so I don't.
Maybe just one, putting in the access there, and, uh, the next point of. For max, you can use the credit.
So, I, I guess what I'm saying is, from my perspective, as I look at this, I want some certainty. What that other parcel can use as an entrance, and what documents are in place, what's been recorded, so and so forth. I'm just throwing that out.
There wasn't a deed restriction.
Okay.
Because it wasn't recorded at that.
Okay, okay. Right now, the earliest you could possibly get a public hearing is October twenty-fourth. If we postpone this for two weeks to our next hearing, and we get a green light from Doug, that he's got the information that he needs. We could still move forward and have your public hearing on October twenty-fourth, but I just don't wanna lock it to it now, without knowing we've got adequate information.
We would know by the next meeting.
Like by the next meeting, if you, if you have it in it, Doug says, green light.
I've got, I mean, to me, it's, there's enough information in there for Doug to make a, uh, reasonable engineering judgment that we can add, but we are gonna. Provide proper storm art management. Before I can give Doug a call tomorrow, today, you know, there are.
Public hearing at the site with, and special permit, or just?
Both, I'm both.
Can we see what the fence is gonna look like then?
Sure.
The fence? The fence around.
I would just, I would just apply that to Doug.
Yeah.
Yeah, like, you guys. And then I think as a board, we, we should consider this walkability. Because we've got this project, we've got the one across the street, we've got the one across Berdick, and it's such a big, I think it's an opportunity to think a little bit more about walkability. Not necessarily these residents, but maybe if someone's visiting and they just wanna take a walk.
You have to, you have to deal with all the properties, not just this one, you have to deal with America, you, and.
Well, it's by good. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like.
How can, how can we control that?
They're going, what's taking up there, I mean, they wanna go to the mall, that's quite a ways.
Well, you gotta form a district that they get.
Well, even like around there, even listen to the medical center, we've got Starview, so all of those people, we need just around. Yeah, like, uh, if we're creating a kind of those.
They don't want sidewalks up there. It's from there.
Yeah, I don't, I'm thinking we can just.
I don't wanna tie this up to that. Because that's a whole separation. Well, we, we covered it last time, we approved this particular parcel.
It already incorporates two of the parcels. This is the poor parcel that I'm supposed to incorporate.
We can, may, please, I'm sorry, can we see the, what that looked like previously?
Yeah.
Yeah, the previous site plan for J A, there wasn't. Tom's workplace style, it's on the upper parcel, especially was, went soon, she was way passionate about it. I can't get past the way, what, what the discussion was, just come across, onto that parcel we're showing now. So they came back into that part of the Y, and the follow-up was, people workplace style, side of the road, across the top. They're closing it to the back of the Y.
Pretty dense.
And that, and that, and that would work with it.
And you've got a, you've got a drainage ditch right now that runs out through that B. It comes this way, which is what ties into.
How far is that from the Y, as far as that? You can see it right there. Yeah, well, that.
A lot of it, when you're closer.
I'd look, I'd go up there, take a look here. Certainly, if you're gonna do it, I mean, I think it'd be great, if you could do it. But, what, I would caution us to think about. The creation of sidewalks and walkability from the standpoint of the construction, the maintenance, the snow plowing, that, this is not. This is not something you just plop on the ground and it takes care of itself.
They already exist.
Pardon?
They've already existed, they're privately owned.
If they're privately owned, that's one thing, yeah.
Then you can drive up there and see.
Then they're responsible for the maintenance.
Town owns the east.
But they're not, so we have to write away. Be a trail.
The path on this side will. Specifically to that.
Unless the board disagrees, uh, I, I think we ought to, uh, schedule this for two weeks from tonight, and see what you're able to develop. And leave the possibility, being flexible, leaving the possibility that we can have a public hearing as of October twenty-fourth. Yeah, that's, I agree, yeah, we don't need a motion or anything, it's just, that's where we stand, yeah.
Do, do we want to, what was the final word on the walkability issue, to get the, the direction?
I think he's seen that some of the board members are very strongly in favor of it. Something to think about in your development.
Tyler, you said somebody, unfortunately, Doc, where, I, what was the circumstance, they were walking along the.
They left Starview, they had to walk down to Berdick Street in order to walk down Berdick Street to town center, and, and they, they found. Walking alongside.
Was it on the side of, then the close side?
They fell on Berdick Street?
Yeah. Whereas this path, or trail, as we call it, would eliminate all that extra contact with the commercial traffic.
You know, I saw a fellow something about arrows, where he had to wait, he was on the grass, and he couldn't run out of arrow.
Creates a hazard, we're just thinking of the safety of the, that's all I'm thinking of.
Yeah, I just wanted to know. Especially in my mind is. Yeah, was it along the, uh, was that Berdick?
Along Mount, is that Berdick? Yeah, they were headed that.
Uh, it's something, I'll talk with Mr. Bowman, Mars Paragone, uh. I know more, I can fill him in on history of this area, it's where it's manifested.
Thank you, thank you, and we're not, we're not trying to give you a hard time.
No, I understand.
We're, uh, just concerned about the safety.
Well, just so you were, from our time, right, I mean, once, we still, there's kind of a, it's a long step in here, but. He's got the state health department process to go through. To get the town on board, in order for him to. So that's kind of why I.
Okay, well, the idea of what he's trying to do, you know it was approved a few years back, and, and it's, and it's still a good idea what you're trying to do, just we gotta do it under the right circumstances. Well, next item on the agenda is an application by A and E, I'm saying E and S and Y Center. This is the second presentation by them for site plan approval for a med spa behind the resort lifestyles, all on tax map number zero eight six dash zero one dash zero three point nine. Brad, we would like to hear from you, because this plan is so totally different than what we had anticipated it was going to be.
Spend most of time. Not market tax. But all, the big changes. Site plan as far as. Cleaning, utilities, storm arm dreams, that's all still. Since the last time I was, we were choosing the, up ahead, so we're, an architect, uh, I want the tie-in, and architects right here in Syracuse. To develop a building plan for you, so this, uh. If you coming up to go, uh, coming up to some drive, so this would be that two-story. Talked about, so, uh, a few from outside, and you can come up through, but just to give you an idea of the different architectural features, building materials, and whatnot. This is on the parking lot side, so this is, uh, as you point you all into the site, uh, what you, you know, kind of features that it's a. Story look, um. Bed, lots of pitch roofs, things like that, but it's, it's one-story. Uh, from the parking lot.
So that's facing north, right?
Correct, yes. Just further along the site. As we go, and then just, there's a full, the elevation is, um, on the medical center drive, so it's. I was getting confused because I'm just a civil engineer, whether you should be considered a south elevation, or a nor really looking elevation, whatever you want to call it. On the center drive, we'll look back, uh, to the building, uh, this is from the parking lot. Special rendition, you know, from, from the southeast.
Is there, one of the things I noticed that I'm not real thrilled with is the off-site parking. Do you know, had there been some discussions about leasing the off-site parking and where it will be?
She regarded the northeast of the center parking lot itself.
Yeah, you tell me, I mean.
We did, you know, we absolutely had a discussion in one of our previous meetings regarding that. This has a diagram of one hundred and forty-one parking spots, that sits right now.
Yeah, so.
So, no. So the parking spaces that we're showing, as far as being, are these in here?
Yeah, right. And my question is, has there been any discussions with medical center about leasing?
Yes, there has, I've had those discussions. And I just, I don't, I'm looking at this, and, and looking at the business model, I just don't think I need any more parking. So I did the last, the last correspondence I had with them, it's about Saturday.
So when you say you don't need any more parking, off-site?
Right.
Well, what's this, what is, um, do you have a zoning chart that shows the counts for each of the users?
So, uh, we, we have broken that down, uh.
So that's a critical, um, discussion, it's a really, really a threshold question, because, um. Uh, our code does say that all parking needs to be on the same line. As the use, start with that. Uh, this is retail, that's not what it. This is retail. That's not what it was before. We need to see how it counts for that. It's a markedly different situation. So.
I know there are certain spots that are also still there.
Can I add to that? Because we've had a couple of different models for the remaining three to four and a half thousand square feet. We should have never been late for retail. It really is going to depend on, I'm talking to two physicians, one of them is dermatologists. We'll do skincare, we'll now do diagnostic skin exams right now. Like my medical director, my nursing staff technicians. And then any surgical procedures there after that diagnostic exam goes out, goes out to the primary surgeon. We don't have, we used to do surgery there, now. So it's just a matter of, what am I finishing that space off? It should have never been, this is retail. Yes, we do have a retail portion of our med spa right now. We sell high-end skincare lotions primarily. We want to have that there, but it's not, it's not a retail as shopping, retail shop.
I candidly, I was very disappointed to see these new drawings come in. We made a recommendation to the town board to change the zoning to mainly shopping so that your intended plans could fit on the location. And when I'm looking here and I'm seeing on one end of the building, you've got five thousand square foot for retail. On the other end, you've got another thirteen hundred and sixteen, but you've also got storage for deliveries and things of another eighteen hundred. So much of this, it's almost turning into a shopping plaza as opposed to the medical treatment type of building that you had described.
Well, we want three entrance ways, the primary, the middle one, and the med spa. Separately be physical therapy. And then the third one would be the same services we're doing now, which are hair services. We do hair replacements. It would be a hair salon. We would do more, expand our skin services, but you didn't nail salon services as well. So we're just expanding the med spa service that we provide right now. The original architectural drawing we had is very, very similar to this. I mean, that's the one that we presented here about eight or nine months ago. Same kind of layout, more of a French design with different exteriors with three entrance ways. That was the very first drawing that we presented in my very first meeting. So it always had had three entrance ways. It always scanned the far side of that. We did have a lot of discussion about using that bottom portion as windows, not a walkout, not a doorway or anything like that. But we wanted to have physical therapy on the bottom. Bottom floor of it, some office space. And then just expand the med spa. Retail, we discussed possibly getting into a larger area for makeup. And we want to track juvenile, senior prom, weddings, those kinds of clientele. So we wanted to expand that one area. But the actual footprint itself of the physical exterior is pretty consistent with what we, what I brought here from an architectural drawing. The very first one with three entrance ways.
What's the increase of the square footage from the last?
What we asked for, I think what we, you agreed on is it would be forty thousand square feet with twenty-five on the top, footprint fifteen about.
This is, this fitness center on the lower level?
Physical therapy, workouts, all here.
And is that going to be open to the public like any other fitness center?
No, just physical therapy.
So your, your concept is like, say, hairdresser or you have a clientele that can boost your services and provide products and provide
That's right.
leads for them, but it's not, you're not advertising to the public to commit a previous station to H L bases.
Correct. Yes, it's not a, it's, it's for our clientele. We've seen thirty-five thousand clients in the last six years at our location. And with those services, there are medical dreams, medical treatment points like that we do sell.
This is physical therapy. Services.
All physical therapy. Occupational, athletic, the whole industry.
So you can provide, you provide that for clients with bags and knee injuries, whatever they come from. That's that, that's that with retail.
Then lights are labeled to be counted.
Yeah.
Large area.
Is that changed, Joe? Did it always have?
No, it was not there before.
Is this storage?
This is on there.
Meaning you would need access to the bathroom from medical center track?
No.
You're not going to get that.
No.
So how do we get access to that?
Well, the service area is right here.
How do you get over to that storage deliveries area? It's in the back, you know?
So is that a thing real, right? I show again, it's time to move. So, you know, we have to work that out here. Physically. We have to bring in a D C O. Just to make that.
Thank you. Safety services, Joe, they have to form entrance and exit.
I think the issue we had was working with the architect is there were some timelines and deadlines. We wanted to make sure you got at least the exterior footprint, three D and the elevation. I believe I'm going to need an access on that corner we're talking about, and I think that's going to cut into the building itself. We, I know we discussed this a few times. In my current space right now, fifty-five percent of the footprint storage. We have exam rooms with one client in it, and sometimes one provider will be attending to two or three client rooms at a time. So with eighteen three room rooms, at capacity, we're going to have eighteen people. So it's going to be that far right the corner, we're going to need access. Of my fifty-five percent storage in my current facility, that's just not going to change. I also have a storage facility around eighteen hundred and two thousand square feet where I have a lot of equipment. A lot of equipment that needs swapped out. Technology changes a lot, so the capital equipment's pretty good size. So I just, just moving around and fixing equipment. We have repair people come all the time. I'm just, I'm going to need to get it out of there and put it in the area, just a, you know, small garage of some sort. So a lot of the space that I'm asking for is just utility, the ability to get in and out, not only just shipments. A lot of our equipment requires maintenance on a regular basis. Out of the facility. Storage areas.
How much of the current area of your facility is for, I guess, physical therapy or whatever? I mean, this, this, the second basement, there's five, there's twenty thousand square feet. How much of your current?
Of my current location, we only have one exam room. It's not a physician doing any physical therapy whatsoever. Talked to actually two or three physical therapists that want to join us. We want to expand those services. There are a lot of physical therapists on. The physical makeup of the exam rooms and workout material, equipment, I should say, it's just very dangerous. I just think there's a need to go to level of what we do. We're in wellness. That's not why I'm saying wellness treatments that we have now.
I guess, another way to ask the question that I'm asking. You've got the lower level that's twenty thousand square feet.
No, that's fifteen thousand.
It says nineteen thousand nine four.
Yeah, so. No, that's, it should have been a dotted line. I don't know if it's on the paper or not. But the dotted line is extra storage here. So when we exited the last meeting, you, I asked us, what can we go with this square footage so I can go to where our technicals, forty thousand square feet? So I had a footprint of forty thousand, but I brought a dotted line on the area of the building for extra space for storage for everything else.
Your drawings have bumped it to forty-eight thousand twenty feet, but according to your drawings, it's now forty-eight thousand.
Is that coming out from area?
Yeah. I'd have to verify with that.
I believe you added those, you added the patio square footage. We wanted an outdoor area. We, we're in there right now. We have literally no windows, completely closed. We wanted an open, brighter area, being employed around twenty-five, twenty-six people. Just a seating area, outdoor area.
That wasn't there before.
I guess, we never, we, but this is the, I understand it wasn't there before. But this is the, this is the first drawing that I, that I brought of the structure itself. All in fairness, all I had was just an architectural drawing, basically a sketch of what it looked like. Just to get an idea that this is something of a proposed business that could go in this site. So this is, this is the first architectural drawing that I actually got.
I guess, I'm trying to get an understanding of exactly what this business model is. And we've got five thousand of retail, four thousand salon, thirteen hundred retail, twenty thousand in the lower level. I mean, more than fifty percent of this is not part of what I think your main business is.
Honestly, it's, it's not labeled properly. There's nothing, retail should never have been on there. I'm not looking to do anything retail. Other than what we're doing right now, which is skincare. But we are a high-end skincare provider. I need a larger area. It's going to be plus size of exam, followed by fifteen, maybe a little bit larger in the front. For showing area to sit down and have consultation. Retail area on the very end should never have said retail. That's for a physician group that I just haven't decided on. I'm talking with a dermatologist. I'm talking with a general surgeon who's going to do vein therapy, which we're already doing. She's doing very proceeds that takes three exam rooms. That's going to take twenty-five hundred to three thousand square feet. With a doctor's office and a nurse.
How many?
That whole area right there is not retail.
But that's what you're.
I know that. I know it says retail.
No, I know. That's where you're heading off to.
Good shopping.
So how many square feet? Your facility now, how many square feet is it?
I'm in four thousand square feet right now.
And we're going to forty-eight thousand.
We're going to go to twenty-five thousand square feet on top and fifteen thousand square feet below. Because that's what we, we came to an agreement on. I mean, we, we asked, I asked. I said, can I, I need to go to an architect and draw the footprint. Can I get, it's going to be forty thousand square feet. And then when we did the drawings, I said, okay, now I'm looking at the rooms. I just don't have my room for storage, everything that I discussed for my equipment. So I, I put a couple of extra thousand square feet on the area where it says retail to see if I can get that. And access there, an area to move equipment on, in and out of, to have equipment repaired. I've got eighteen rooms with equipment that costs millions and millions of dollars. The agents have to use a formula on a regular basis. You can't do them in a treatment. In the hall, lobbyists. They've got to be wheeled out. Right now, they go to those, I physically take them to a storage unit right down the street from the circus. That's what they work on. And that's almost two thousand square feet. So retail needs to be a very nice place.
So, so just, I mean, here's the thing, and this, and this is why I think we need to go back and look at what's real here. Like, is, is, what is part of your practice? Because there's going to be restrictions put on this because of the parking, right? So retail, one parking space for each hundred. Personal service, one parking space for two hundred. Offices, one parking space for three hundred. You know, I don't hope there's any, you know, food in here. So that, we need to know that in order to make the right determination about the parking and whether this is too big for the site or if it's all, you know, in association with your group, if it's going to be anything separate, are the, is this hair salon going to be separate? It's going to have a separate parking count. And then when that's established, then we can see if it's the right size. Does that make sense?
Yes, perfect sense. Yeah.
I think that's what we're trying to say. So the expansiveness of it, and I think some of the way this is, this offshoot was unexpected. And I don't, I'm not, I'm not there. I don't, I don't, I don't do that. But I'm hearing that that was unexpected. I'm not sure if it fits or how it's going to work on the parking circulation and the entrances, that's what I'm hearing. Anybody want to correct me?
No, there needs to be clarity. There needs to be clarity of what we're doing.
I'm not saying rock is wrong. I'm just saying, we just really don't get.
What do you mean by offsets? I'm not clear with you by post.
I have this, this piece of architecture that seems offset.
Oh, the separation, oh, okay, all that.
No, no. Something's down below.
Also, so that I can tell you. We wanted to separate our med spa services from our group. Right now, anytime you break a skin, it's a surgical procedure. We do Botox and do whatever. We're going to, we're doing vein therapy right now, but we want to get into more vein therapy. So it's going to require more surgical equipment. So we just wanted to separate those services, a small amount of recovery time, wanted to separate from the normal footprint. Just give that, just my good.
So the back piece is the surgical?
That's right. Then we have a nursing station. We have a more specialized nurse back there for the surgical procedures. We're going to get an IV therapy. I mean, it's been very, very busy. So anytime you break a skin, we wanted to separate that area. Just regarding your services and salon, for fifty years, this location, previous owner, has been doing hair services, hair replacement in the location that we're in right now. So I'm not trying to create another, this is what we did. We have over three hundred and fifty clients come in on a regular basis. And they'll order hair pieces on a regular basis, and they need to be repaired and cleaned and fixed. So we're going to do those services because that's what we've been doing now. I've got three hair specialists that have that clientele, and that's going to take around, quite honestly, that's going to take probably close to twenty-five hundred to three thousand square feet. And right now, more than half of that is storage in areas for repair. It's a very specialized service. It's really only one of the businesses in Europe that does this justice. So it's something we used to do.
I, I get that. Thank you for that. So that just needs just a better explanation, a better explanation of the parking requirements and explanation of where they're coming in and going. And then I think the board can, can look at it appropriately. So this was helpful and helpful explanation. And if it, you know, and again, the board may have to make a finding and some conditions about it has to be affiliated with this this practice, right? You know, and that's all. It looked like, wow, now we're going to have a retail, you know, what's going to be.
Yeah, I think you explained it well.
And, and you're explaining it better. So if you can go back and even like
I think so. I think we, everyone was just sort of, and when I'm looking now at the comparison of what you submitted last June and what we were talking about, and this one here, there are such significant differences.
That's not necessarily bad. Remember when you had two buildings in your first pressurization?
Yeah.
Figured this one building ended up with a smaller footprint and less space. That's a real fuck. It started with three.
No, that was a good, that was a good thing.
These iterations are very, very helpful because it's a heck of a lot easier to do what we're doing here than it is for your building. So don't, don't take this as a criticism. It's, we need to put all this into, we have to fit this into the code. Time you change what may seem to be a layer decision, then it turns out to be a major code decision. That's where we're running into trouble. That's where I think we can both help each other.
And then we can try to resolve the staffing issues based on what's really captured.
Yeah.
Well, we need to put on the chat.
Right. Would you like to be?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to have things, right?
We can have you on the calendar for three weeks. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Other business. There is no other.
I'll make the motion here.